All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we've got myself, Chair, representing the 4th District. I see Councilman Cohen of the 1st District, Councilman Glover of the 13th District, and Councilwoman Porter of the 10th District. All right, and from the members of the Office of the President, I've got Nikki Thompson on the line.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Matt Stagman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And from the Mayor's Office, I do not see Natasha, but I do see Nina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nina. All right, and this afternoon, the committee will have a hearing for Bill 21-0041R, informational hearing, domestic violence in Baltimore City, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City State Attorney's Office, the Baltimore Police Department, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, the Health Department, the Sheriff's Office, as well as community advocates fighting against domestic violence to share their expertise with the Baltimore City Council and the general public to discuss programs available to victims of domestic violence. This bill was introduced on April 19, 2021, and is sponsored by myself. And so this is the second hearing that we're having on domestic violence in Baltimore. In June, this committee had a chance to talk with city agencies and advocates about their perspectives on domestic and intimate partner violence and why we were seeing a significant increase in intimate partner violence during the pandemic. As a former City Stat Analyst, the former DV Stat Analyst, it was helpful to revisit that process and better understand the process that domestic violence victims experience when they reach out for help, as well as to get a chance to hear from the city's trusted partners like House of Ruth, Maryland. We see changes in that process, some positive and some negative, in how the city handles domestic violence cases. In my days, since I was with City Stat, and I really appreciated the discussion and the feedback. In the weeks after our last hearing, I actually got the chance to get another angle on the domestic violence issue. Our two guests today have been working with victims for years to address domestic violence and its root causes. They specifically focus on community-based approaches that may not necessarily engage with and sometimes strategically avoid the traditional criminal justice system. Professor Lee Goodmark is a Marjorie Cook Professor of Law at the University of Maryland Carey School of Law and teaches the Gender Violence Clinic. She's written several books and academic articles on this topic, including a 2018 book, Decriminalizing Domestic Violence: A Balanced Policy Approach to Intimate Partner Violence. And Lydia Watts is the Executive Director of Rebuild, Overcome, and Rise Center, or ROAR, and has spent the last 30 years working with survivors of intimate partner and sexual violence. ROAR intentionally works on connecting with survivors who are disinclined to pursue traditional legal and criminal avenues. I'm very appreciative of their presence here today and look forward to hearing from them and their expertise. So without further ado, I want to turn it over to Professor Goodmark.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you so much for inviting us to be with you today. Just as a little bit of background, I have been representing victims of violence for the last 27 years, primarily in the civil system, although for the last eight years, more in the criminal legal system. The Gender Violence Clinic at the University of Maryland Carey School of Law primarily represents what are called criminalized survivors, people who are incarcerated for crimes related to their own victimization. And so my experiences with the system are as an advocate, in addition to as an academic, which I think brings kind of an important perspective to this issue. And if you had told me 27 years ago that I would come before the City Council to say the criminal legal system is not fixing the problem of intimate partner violence and in fact is making it worse, I would have said you were crazy. At that time, I firmly believed, as did most of us in the anti-violence community, that the way to address intimate partner violence was through swift and harsh punishment, that if we put away people who were committing intimate partner violence, that that would solve the problem. And 40 years of kind of experience has now taught us that that's simply not true. So in my book, Decriminalizing Domestic Violence, I talk about why that is, and the book really does lay out the research on this area that I'm only going to briefly touch on today. Criminalization does not reduce rates of intimate partner violence. And the reason that we know this is because we've been doing kind of a natural experiment in the United States for the last, what year is it? Almost 30 years with the Violence Against Women Act. BAWA really pumped serious money into criminalization. Criminalization had been ramping up from the late 70s and specifically kind of through the 80s with the addition of things like mandatory arrest laws and no-drop prosecution laws that focused attention on using the criminal legal system to combat intimate partner violence. But it's really in 1994 with the Violence Against Women Act that you have these huge infusions of federal dollars going into states and local communities to beef up the criminal system's response. And what we've seen in response to all of that money, over a billion dollars, going into the criminal legal system just through the two largest BAWA grant programs, the Grants to Encourage Arrest Program and the STOP Program, is that rates of intimate partner violence have certainly fallen, but they haven't fallen any more than the overall crime rate has dropped. So despite what the media would have you believe, the overall crime rate in the United States has dropped significantly since 1994. So has intimate partner violence, but not any more than the overall crime rate. So for all of that money, we got no more return than we got on our investment kind of generally. In addition, there's no good social science evidence to suggest that criminalization deters intimate partner violence. There's data that says that arrest sometimes prevents recidivist violence, sometimes does nothing, and sometimes actually makes recidivist violence worse. There is data that shows that incarceration may have some effect, but only if it is kind of coupled with close post-release monitoring. So basically, if you sit on someone, they are unlikely to reoffend. But there's nothing that kind of gives you the reason to believe that the criminal legal system should be the answer to this problem. What it does do is a tremendous amount of harm, and it does harm to communities of color, which is not something I need to tell the council in any way, except to say that the racism that exists in the rest of the criminal legal system is pervasive in the response to intimate partner violence as well. It is harmful to the LGBTQIA community, where people are disproportionately arrested when police come to address calls involving intimate partner violence. And it's deeply harmful to the people who, in theory, it was meant to protect, which is victims of violence. So if you look, for example, at states that adopted mandatory arrest laws, what you see is that rates of mandatory arrest climbed significantly after the inception of those laws, and more among women than anyone else, not because women had all of a sudden become more violent, but because of the way those laws were being administered. And so given all of that, and given that actually the criminal legal system exacerbates some of the correlates of intimate partner violence, including economic stress and trauma and post-traumatic stress, there's real reason to question whether we should continue using that system at all, and certainly whether we should keep using it as our primary response to intimate partner violence in the United States, which is how we have been using it. Mr. Chair, I thought it was particularly apt that you raised the issue of the pandemic, because one of the really interesting pieces of data that's come out of the pandemic is that rates of intimate partner violence did absolutely skyrocket. But there was a point in April of 2020 where they also came down significantly, and that was around the first stimulus checks, because economic stress drives intimate partner violence. And when you look at the things that criminalization does in communities, one of the things that it does is create economic stress by making it harder for people to find jobs and to keep good jobs and depriving them of earning ability. So there's interesting data out there that shows how the stress and trauma of the pandemic may be responsible for intimate partner violence as much as anything else, and that those things, of course, are exacerbated by the criminal legal system. So what should we be doing instead? I think for me, there are kind of three big answers, and they're economics, prevention, and community-based responses. So in terms of economics, giving people who are subjected to abuse the economic power to leave abusive relationships successfully, if that's what they choose to do, is absolutely essential. But also, giving people who are struggling economic power so that they are not then turning to violence when they are frustrated, when they are economically stressed, is equally important. There's data that shows that if you raise the minimum wage, you can decrease violence, all violence, across the board, right? That came out of the Obama White House in the conversations around increasing the minimum wage several years ago. And so thinking about, for example, the ways that deindustrialization and globalization have hit Baltimore specifically, and how that's deprived folks in our communities of work, and how that economic stress is then translating into intimate partner violence, I think is a really important part of this whole conversation. For so long, the anti-violence movement has been afraid to talk about needing to work with people who are doing harm, because in many ways, policy is a zero-sum game, and money that is going into one set of interventions is not going to victims specifically. But I think if we're really interested in changing the dynamics here and helping to alleviate the correlates of intimate partner violence, we have to be working with the people who are doing harm. So that's a definite mind shift. In terms of prevention, we should be putting money into the things that we know drive intimate partner violence: child abuse and neglect, exposure to community violence, exposure to intimate partner violence in the home. All of those adverse childhood experiences are highly correlated with both the perpetration and the victimization of domestic violence. And so if we're interested in stopping the problem, we need to be intervening much earlier in families and in communities. There's good data out there about public health prevention that we need to be drawing on. And then we need to be thinking about community-based responses, and that is kind of runs the gamut from who is our first responder? And if it doesn't need to be the police, who can it be? Building on the amazing work that we've done with violence interruption in this community already, there's a really interesting pilot happening in Chicago where violence interrupters are being paired with people with expertise in intimate partner violence, so that violence interrupters aren't going out with no knowledge of how to do this work, and they have that, those people to draw on. Safe Streets, the folks at Safe Streets have told me before, yeah, we do a lot of intimate partner violence work. They are already doing this work. And so we can think differently about who our first responder can be. We can also think about accountability differently. About half of people never contact the, that contact law enforcement at all. They're not interested in punishment, they're not interested in retribution, and they're not interested in having their partners or their former partners incarcerated. But they need justice, and what justice means to those folks varies tremendously. It can go from an apology to economic support, to people and kind of in placed, placed within community who can help them to feel safe and secure, to kind of a plan, a set-out plan. And we can use various mechanisms to do this work. We can build on the restorative justice infrastructure that we have in the city to do some of this work, not all, because it's not as though we can pick up the criminal legal system, move it to one side, plop down restorative justice and think we're done. It's not going to work that way. But we can use restorative justice to do some of that work. We can build on kind of the interesting work that's already going on in communities around mutual aid and pod mapping that has really been built up during the pandemic, thinking about what is it that I need and what is it that you can do for me and what is it that I can do for you? I can give you a couch to sleep on if you need one, and I can give you 50 bucks if you need it. How do we build on what communities are already doing for each other? And a lot of that is really granular neighborhood-level work. That's not kind of a quick and easy fix, and it's certainly a lot harder than just saying, here, Police Department, here's another, you know, millions of dollars to try to do this work better. But I would submit to you that we have been pouring millions upon millions of dollars into the criminal legal system's response to intimate partner violence for years, and we're not making a dent. We've got to do this differently, and I think that's the way we can do it. Thank you so much again for inviting me.
Thank you, Lee, and really appreciate the work that you're doing. I think from our initial discussion, I learned a lot from our conversation and kind of broadened my horizons on how we should be looking at the problem and the different approaches that could be really helpful towards getting through some of the impasses that we've seen in approaches in the past. So with that, I want to move to, to agency reports. First, I've got the Law Department. Oh, I'm sorry. Before I go to the agency reports, and I'm not sure if the Law Department is here, I want to make sure I give Lydia a chance to speak as well. Is Lydia on?
I am, yes, thank you so much.
I'm sorry, Lydia, I almost missed you.
I was gonna pop my hand up. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, for the invitation and to you and the other members on board. In the light of full disclosure, Lee and I have known each other for that entire 27 years. So much of what I am going to say will really just kind of build on that excellent framework that we set forth. And just to give a little bit more background, Lee and I both practiced representing survivors in DC for many years. And then I also have worked in Massachusetts and now in Baltimore City for the past almost three, it'll be three years in January. And so all jurisdictions that have some similarities to Baltimore City and, and that have had, you know, differing, those sometimes equally challenging issues, certain departments and prosecutors offices, and living through these three decades of advocacy of the ways in which those collaborations have ebbed and flowed, and at times in some jurisdictions worked very closely and seemingly well from a design standpoint of what Lee was talking about, of if we just lock people up and if they're held accountable through that criminal justice system, that their behavior will change. And I will say another aspect from it, you know, as a younger person, 30 years ago, a lot of the efficacy that went into the violence emphasis on policing was really grew out of the experience of survivors calling the police and the police.
Your audio is in and out. I'm not sure if it's your connection or maybe your distance. It may have been your connection. You can proceed, and if we have any trouble.
My office, which is always what makes my mind explode. Like, I came here for the better internet access rather than... Is this better or not, no difference?
I can hear you now.
Okay, so apologies. I was just noting that the sort of history that led into the Violence Against Women Act and its emphasis on a law enforcement approach really was born of the experience of survivors of calling the police and the police saying, this is a family matter. This is not something that criminal justices, you know, candidly treating intimate partner violence as a, as not really an assault at all, that this was something that was personal and within behind closed doors. And so similarly to Lee, I thought, well, that's, you know, that's a travesty, and clearly, if somebody is harming someone in their home, they should be culpable as well. But what we touched on is that these relationships are different than an assault, you know, between, you know, let's say a bar or a brawl, right? The relationship between the two parties is by very definition one that is much more complex and interwoven. So as you noted in the introduction, ROAR really emphasizes reaching out to those that are the least likely to engage with law enforcement, in part because there is the House of Ruth, Maryland, there's turnaround, there are already existing organizations that were working in close collaboration with the police. We wanted to reach out to those that might be, you know, missed or fall between the sort of safety net that was already in place. So some of what I'm gonna say is intuitive and probably things you've all heard before, but why wouldn't a survivor reach out? Obviously, there's a lot of threats, because they're just trusting. Here that they're not gonna treat me right, they're gonna, you know, maybe they're gonna place me at harm if I'm a person of color in particular, you know, just an overall feeling of the police aren't there to protect my community, so I'm not gonna call them. Oftentimes with intimate partner violence, and I hear this time and time again, is I called before and I had a really bad experience. Either the police threatened to arrest me, or, you know, it was in front of the children, it was traumatizing, they're dragging their father out of the door in cuffs, or they arrested him, they let him out the next day, nothing happened. So that we hear a lot. We also, certainly immigration statuses are undocumented for undocumented folks. Rivals and... This is a very corrupt agency. Their own vulnerabilities, if they're using drugs, if they're engaging in criminal activity of some kind, you know, they may feel like, you know, even if they don't arrest me for this incident, I might have some other reason or maybe have an open warrant against me. The increased scrutiny, not only of themselves but of their families, that asking any system, and again, this is very endemic in communities of color, you know, with partner social services, child protective services, you know, anything that if I'm inviting a kind of system into my home, that it winds up having a detrimental impact. There's also the issue, and I think Lee touched on this a bit, of, you know, if it's a survivor who's not perfect, right? We have an idea of somebody who's subjected to intimate partner violence, that they're very submissive, that they're fearful, that, you know, they do everything they can to maintain peace, and if they don't fit that category, like that, you know, bad language, you know, calling out the names of their partners, if they're doing something that might be viewed as kind of instinctive that, that they, you know, they don't feel like, well, the police are gonna be on my side. One of you mentioned that violence can often get worse after an arrest. So we know that, you know, if most instances, it will be charged with a simple assault, the person's gonna be released probably the next day on their personal recognizance, absent some, you know, very lengthy record. And then oftentimes, the dynamic is, you did exactly what I told you not to do. So all of those reasons fuel the hesitancy to connect with them. So going to some of the things that Lee mentioned as, you know, as solutions to this is, I just want to underscore, because I also have talked to many people at Safe Streets, not only have they also shared with me that they do domestic violence work, but there's also a very large intersection with gun violence. A gun shooter has been shot in Baltimore City for the last two years, and it's going up even higher this year. And, you know, some of that is, in all likelihood, related to either escalation of violence within an intimate relationship, as we saw with the, what, I don't know all of the facts, but we know that the first homicide of 2021 was an intimate partner violence homicide. So that's certainly one scenario. Another scenario that I heard from some of the violence interventionists with Safe Streets is, say, an adult son who may have access to a gun, who is seeing his mother being beaten by her partner, and that that adult son is sort of vigilante justice, shooting the person that's harming his mother or aunt or grandmother, whoever. And so again, kind of getting to what is underlying all of these ways that this violence intersects, as Lee was talking about, you know, exposure to having been abused as a child, exposure to community violence, exposure to gun violence, exposure to intimate partner violence, all of those things are risk factors for a mother, and we treat it as if these are experiences that people have in cyrilloges. I'm a gun violence survivor, that is my experience. Well, oftentimes, if you talk to folks who have survived a non-fatal gunshot or family members of homicide victims, that person has been victimized in many, many different ways over the course of their life. And all of that compounding trauma, and I, you know, commend the council for having passed, it feels like a million years ago now, was it 2019, the Trauma-Informed City Act and all of the training that's being done. And we really need to double down and quadruple down on resources to address the trauma in the most under-resourced communities in the city. I will say another enormous factor is safe and affordable housing. Affordable housing itself is a, is a big thing they would, or a big naughty ball of string in and of itself. But for folks that are trying to get out of a violent relationship, access to affordable, safe housing where they, or maybe they can't be found, or at a minimum where they're not being exposed, again, to all of those respect. There's high rates of gun violence, not being forced to go into shelter. All of those things, those measures are very important. And then certainly back to the restorative justice piece that Lee talked about, what, what we've been trying to do here at ROAR is to really develop a restorative justice option that isn't a diversion, as most of the restorative justice processes are in this. Another point I mean by diversion is, you know, it's like you mentioned, child court, it's often offered up as, in lieu of a sentence, you can go through this restorative justice process. If that does not succeed, then you'll go back to the criminal justice system. So it's sort of a, you know, a way to resolve that issue outside of the criminal justice system. Because that is a backup if our justice system fails in some way. But for so many of the folks who come to ROAR, there is no criminal justice process. That's not what they're looking for. And so they're, so having a diversionary program, it doesn't meet their needs. What, what we're trying to develop is a community-based restorative justice process where a survivor, and it very much needs to be led by the survivor, if they want to explore that option, that that opportunity is available, that the restorative justice practitioner would reach out to the person that's causing harm, see if that's something they're willing to do. And it's constructed, and there's, as Lee mentioned, there's been a number of pilots across the country who have done this very well in very discreet populations. So we're trying to, and we're hoping in the coming year to be able to pilot some similar-type projects here in Baltimore City, and perhaps again, also partnering with Safe Streets to do something similar to what Lee was, was talking about, having been done in other parts of the country. So those, those are the, the three. I guess I'll say the fourth, as well as, again, underscoring Lee with the economic support. ROAR has been, since COVID hit, have been dedicating funding to provide financial assistance to survivors. It's different than the mutual aid model. The mutual aid model is quite literally survivor to survivor, saying, this is what I can offer up, this is what I can offer in exchange. Instead, it's grant dollars that we're then administering, and we're paying the expenses for survivors. Again, not just survivors of intimate partner violence, but of other types of violence as well, to pay their cell phone bills, to pay back rent, to pay a BG&E bill so that they can move and get, you know, their BG&E, restored to the new property. Those kinds of things that really make the difference between someone being able to remain in a stable situation or falling in, candidly, into either homelessness or the shelter system. So those are the four kind of alternatives to a close personal approach. Trying to work with others and developing on, you know, small scales so that we can get some data around how, how that really, at the end of the day, our goal is all about meeting survivors where they are and helping them reach the goals that they have set. So it's a little bit different, a different measurement than, you know, has somebody recidivated, has somebody been rearrested? It's really about the survivor, and the survivor can finally, if successful, help. Help assist that survivor in that journey. So our data is a little bit more, it's less black and white, a little more gray, but we, we are in the process of launching some of those pilot projects to offer that data. So with that, I would say thank you, this opportunity.
Awesome, thank you, Lydia. And I, I wanna, one, thank you for, for all those insights. We're, we're gonna go through the agency reports first before we get back to questions, because I actually have questions relating to some of the things that you've said that I think maybe the agencies can help understand what we're seeing by way of the data and otherwise. I also want to acknowledge Councilman Burnett and Councilman Costello, who've joined the meeting. So I'll move on to agency reports. First up, we have the Law Department. I'm not sure if we have someone here representing from the Law Department. If not, that's okay. I don't think we have much to report. I know the State's Attorney's Office unfortunately got called out to Annapolis and will not be here today. Next up, we have the Police Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. For the record, my name is Michelle Wurzberger. I am the Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. I'm joined by a couple of members of our team. We have Shannon Conway, as always. We have Sergeant Matthew D. Simone Jr. of the Special Investigations Section, and Tina Kamara, who is a victim advocate also with the Special Investigations Section. I, I do want to say for the record that the Commissioner frequently says that most problems the city is seeing, we are not going to police our way out of. And so we're very excited about being at this session with the two women who spoke earlier, you know, who are doing the hard work, trying to support victims and families in a way that the police really can't, because they're seeing them in a different way, they have a different relationship with them. So we're very grateful to be here. We don't have anything additional to add, other than what we've said at the, at the previous hearing, but we are here for any questions that you or the committee may have.
Thank you, Michelle, I appreciate it. Next up, we've got the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Nina, are you, are we able to at least stand by their report from the last bill?
Mr. Chair, we do have Nick Wilson on from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. He may be having an issue with his audio. I'm not sure that he had anything additional. Oh, I think he may have been able to take himself off mute. I'll see if he can speak.
There we go, Nick. Still can't hear you.
Hi, Mr. Chair, can you hear me now?
Yep, there we go.
Thanks for having us. Last time, I was able to give kind of some exciting updates about some new initiatives our office was undertaking, specifically restarting the Domestic Violence Coordinating Council, which will involve a Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team and a lethality assessment program kind of expansion. I mentioned briefly that we received a grant from the federal government, from the Office of Violence Against Women, that I'm currently going through training, so we can access that money. And that money will go towards a dedicated coordinator for Intimate Partner Violence in Monsey, as well as someone for House of Ruth and funding for BPD around keeping people safe, for intimate partner violence. We were able to award and announce a grant to turnaround to help us with some human trafficking efforts. And of course, I was very excited to see Lydia Watson here, her wonderful presentation. She's been a really valued partner for us, specifically on our expansion to Gun Violence Victim Services, and we're able to award them a fairly substantive grant to really partner with us. And while that's focused more on gun violence, as she mentioned, intimate partner violence is a very significant part of the gun violence crisis facing Baltimore. I thought today, we received a couple of questions about the Baltimore City Visitation Center. I thought it might be a good idea to kind of check in where we are now that we're closing out the end of the year. If this visitation center was created as a multidisciplinary team to improve the court's response to domestic violence, we're proud to report that it's been continuously open throughout the pandemic, providing in-person services, and we have not had a single instance of exposure of COVID-19, thanks to just really wonderful operations and safety from Wendy Lee, my colleague who runs the visitation center. The center serves about 60 families annually on, for at least six months to a year, sometimes longer. Seventy-nine percent of the referrals come from the District Court, and at least 70% of cases that are received are accepted, but the ones that are not accepted are because they're not specific to intimate partner violence or child sexual abuse. Eighty-three percent of all referrals will have a new or existing protective order in place, and victims have access to an attorney through our wonderful partners, the House of Ruth. There's a lot of linkage there happening and guidance to help connect people to other resources focused on responsible fatherhood, substance abuse, mental health, and parenting support. It's a really important place to be able to intervene and do safety planning steps to prevent violence, especially during the tense child exchanges, or when parents have to be in the same place because of the children. And I'm very proud of the work that they've been doing to focus on helping fathers recognize the important role they play in the lives of their children as a motivation for reducing violent behavior. We spend a lot of time, of course, trying to protect the children and the, you know, the mothers, but we also need to, to prevent the cycles of violence, we need to also engage the fathers in this. Thanks to ARPA funding and the mayor's support, we are expanding the capacity of the visitation center. It's currently only open every other week, and it's just really a lot of missed opportunities, and there's been a lot of demand from clients to be able to have more hours. While we originally proposed expanding, you know, full-time every two weeks, we were asked to be good stewards of resources, and we really dug into the data, and we found out when the peak times were for demand for services. And of course, this is, weekend hours was very popular, and so we're going to be using the extra funds to increase 507 weekend hours. And so, and then, you know, because of some backlog in the District of Family Courts, there has been a little bit of a lull, but we're expecting a big spike in referrals. So our staff, we've been hiring new staff, as well as bilingual staff, to make sure that we can meet that demand. And the one other thing I wanted to really emphasize is that while we're doing a lot of work in Baltimore City, we are also making sure that we're being good partners with other counties and cities in the state and working with our state partners. So Monsey's been participating in a statewide collaborative coordinated by the Maryland Network Against Domestic Violence, and there's reviewing a lot of initiatives and looking at best practices. And one of the exciting things is that there's been a lot of consensus that the Family Justice Center model would really make a lot of sense. That's been working in other states, and so one-stop location for seamless services for the victims. We would start with domestic violence, but hopefully be able to use, if that's successful, use that to co-locate other types of services for victims of all types of crime in Baltimore City. And so we're looking to see how that develops, and when it's, if, when the time comes, if this is something that would make sense for Baltimore City, we'll come back to the council and provide some more information of what a Family Justice Center might look like in practice here. And I just want to mention, you know, this is something that, as we've talked about, this is so important during the pandemic. Baltimore, we've been tracking, there's been 10 domestic violence-related homicides so far this year compared to eight last year. So while, you know, these numbers aren't huge, that's a 25% increase, but we also know that intimate partner violence can lead to a lot of other types of non-fatal shooting, other types of homicides, other types of group violence. And so it's something that we're really focusing on prevention, as well as victim services. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Nick. Next, we're going to move on to the Health Department.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. This is Kelly Eastman with the Baltimore City Health Department, and we stand by our report for this council bill, and we're here to answer any questions if needed.
Thank you, Kelly. Next up, we've got the Health Department. I'm sorry, Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chair, I don't believe we have anybody attending from the Sheriff's Department, but they, I had contacted them in advance to ask if they had any updates, and there were no additional comments that they were looking to make at this time.
Excellent. Thank you, Nina. And I don't think we have anybody from House of Ruth or Turnaround again today, and so I will open up the floor to questions. And I actually had a starting question as, as you were talking, Lee, I had a couple of questions, namely around how often we see DV deaths? And I guess maybe this is a question for, for BPD. How often we see DV deaths where there had not been a call for service, a 911 call for service, or a criminal incident in the past? So it may look like a new instance, but you would imagine this couple had had issues before, it's just it didn't pop up on our radar. Is that common, Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to pivot to, to Tina or the sergeant, see if they have an answer to that question. And just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, the major of this unit, she had a death in her family, so she was not able to join us today. Anyway, I'll stop talking and see if, if either Tina or the sergeant have the answer to that.
Sure, thank you.
Greetings, everyone. This is Tina. I think that I'll chime in on that. I personally don't have that data. Here at the Family Crimes Unit, we don't deal with homicides, we deal with the aggravated assault, the pointing, the shooting at, the cutting. So that being said, me as the advocate, I don't keep the statistics on how many people in the city have died due to a DV incident.
We can, but, Mr. Chairman, we can find out the, the answer to your question and get back to you.
Thank you. It'd be really helpful. I think as, as Lydia and Lee were, were talking, it made it very clear to me that there are a lot of folks that we will always miss, if only because they feel uncomfortable using 911 or the city as a resource for their own risk, for their family's risk, for the embarrassment or whatever the case is. There's so many reasons why they may second guess whether or not they want to call 911, and there are issues there. It seems ROR might catch some of those folks, but are we making sure that they've got all the resources and otherwise to appropriately respond to those folks? Because I'm, I'm not sure what the data will show us, but I wouldn't be surprised if we're finding that there are a handful of folks that have not popped up on our radar at all. And then we see either lethal violence or just generally any violence later on down the line that we could have gotten ahead of.
So if I may, Chair, excuse me, this is Lydia Watson from ROR. Just, this is obviously anecdotal and not the data that BPD will, will hopefully be able to pull. But I, right now, we have very, we're very active. Survivors of intimate partner violence, who, I'm sorry, re-try that, who are survivors of non-fatal gunshots, and of those 11, seven of them were shot by intimate partners. And I think six of them had never had contact with the police. So they, all of them were, they didn't result in homicides, but they serious. And, and it varied from case to case, sort of, was it a very long-term relationship? Or did it escalate to that kind of high lethality assault fairly quickly? And that really does vary. And to be honest with you, if, if looking at the history of those survivors, there has been significant history of trauma throughout all of, you know, throughout their lives. So they are coming to, you know, that, that sort of, you know, final, I don't want to say final, but you know, that, that sort of act of violence that was very severe, having been shot, having survived many, many different types of victimizations. I raise that in part just to share so it may be data that the PD may be able to provide. But Dr. Joseph Richardson, who is, he's at the University of Maryland College Park, he has a joint appointment School of Medicine here at he and I are going to be doing some qualitative research report in my spare time. I'm getting my MPH at Hopkins as a Bluebird American Health Initiative Fellow. So as part of my MPH, I'll be doing this qualitative research study with those 11 survivors. It isn't to answer this question per se of, you know, why didn't you reach out to the police or might, what might have been different, but really to learn survived gun violence and all of the, the hopes of sort of identifying not only risk factors, but ways in which we could be providing support. Because to be honest, as we all know, the vast majority of gun violence survivors are men, and our responses are very geared towards men's needs. Some of the, the things that we know about this group of women is that they are all mothers, and they are all primarily single mothers, like they have some support, intermittent support from fathers of the children, but not consistent support. So we really want to dig a little deeper, and so once that, you know, that, that report won't be done for probably a year, but once that is done, that may provide some helpful insights to also this, because so many of them have been survivors of intimate partner violence and that they were shot by their abusive partners. So I will certainly be happy to share that research report with the council.
Thank you, Lydia. That, that's exactly what I was worried about is happening. We may not see it, but there may have been early indicators where we could have intervened, provided additional support to the victim, or provided some counseling of some sort to the perpetrator, and, and we just missed that opportunity. But yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you. Other question I have is for you, actually. What are some of the community-based approaches that we've seen that have worked in other cities? And, and what's, what is the local government's role in that?
Well, one that both Lee and I mentioned was, is a partnership with a Safe Streets type entity, where, again, we mentioned, there's a partnership between experts or advocates from the intimate partner violence realm, are co responding with the Community Violence Interventionist, so with the Safe Streets worker. Sometimes it's co-convening, sometimes it's cross-training. So it's really about giving the Safe Streets outreach workers more, the violence interventionist more tools on how to respond to intimate partner violence, more ways of identifying how that might be a dynamic, because it isn't always, it isn't even maybe frequently visibly witnessing violence, right? It's more about picking up on dynamics when you're intervening in a particular conflict. It may be, you know, as we know, that the violence interventionists really, you know, get to know the neighborhood, right? So it's about hearing things in the street, hearing about conflict, hearing about tensions that are rising. And, you know, oftentimes, and again, Lee and I drawing from our years of experience, I can, I can talk about, you know, particular housing projects in DC where there was a very strong community leader who really knew everybody in that housing development, right? And knew who was having, you know, who was fighting, quote unquote, who was, you know, having issues with substance abuse, who was having issues with, you know, their son just got arrested, really kind of tapping into that expertise at a community level, but building up their, their tools and resources and understanding of the, of the dynamics of intimate partner violence, how to intervene successfully without, you know, further causing division or, or canceling, you know, the risk for increased, either increased severity of violence or lethality, but really building on that model of like, your, your eyes and ears are on the ground, you're hearing the stories and, and being able to, you know, intervene appropriately and make referrals when necessary, so really connecting them to the organizations. And this is also where it gets very neighborhood-based, like House of Ruth is a great organization, and they're doing great work, and a lot of people are, really want services in their community, right? So House of Ruth, even though it's in the same city, may feel like, that's way uptown, I'm not going there. I live in Cherry Hill, I want something here. So how, it's also about building resources, those kind of neighborhood-driven resources. And the way in which I see a city government providing support in that is really about money, right? It's really about dedicating more resources to Safe Street, more resources to those community organizations, and perhaps, you know, through Monsey, and Nick and I have talked about this, Nick and I talk a lot, about when, when, when I make him dictator of like, he can just do whatever he and I design, but having a well-developed network again, sort of more on around church that has a very strong you know, again, Mrs. Smith at such and such housing development, it could be a community center, it could be, so really knowing where are those assets in the neighborhoods that can be tapped to on behalf of survivors. So that, that, I think that exhausts my ideas, but I'm sure Lee can build on that with actual examples. Lee always seems to know, like, in Chicago, they're doing this. So I'll turn it over to Lee to supplement.
So I would just add a couple of things. There is work being done around changing community perceptions of intimate partner violence that I think is really important, and how you engage networks of not just geographic communities, but ethnic communities, or religious communities, or kind of communities of affinity around, they're challenging their understandings about intimate partner violence and helping them to, to think differently about the use of violence that has been really successful. There's community accountability work, which kind of starts from the question, when a survivor walks in the door, can, what do you need and how do we give it to you? And so there's an organization in the, the San Francisco Bay area called Creative Interventions that has a 600-page toolkit designed to help communities do that work, so that when somebody says, I need help, everyone around them has ideas and a structure for helping to intervene. There are networks of folks who are working to actually kind of help families and others understand the dynamics of intimate partner violence when somebody is experiencing it, so that they can build in safety and accountability. The Northwest Network in Seattle did this program called Friends, Friends Are Reaching Out or Far Out, which was designed to train friends and family members of folks who are experiencing intimate partner violence and helping to meet many of the needs that were coming up as a result of that violence. There's the restorative justice work that we've talked about being done in kind of pockets of places that is done outside of the state, and I agree with Lydia, you know, so often it's diversion, it's a kind of the carrot to get somebody out of the criminal legal system, but again, for those half of people who are never coming into the system at all, there needs to be resources that you can access without having to go through the criminal legal system. And I think, you know, things like family justice centers are great, but they're also staffed by Child Protective Services and the police and the State's Attorney's Office and lots of folks who are mandated reporters. There are lots of issues around going into a place like that to secure services for folks who have concerns about what exposure to state-based agencies will mean for them. So there's all of that work going on as well, that people could So there's all of that work going on as well, I think that people could join.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm going to open up the floor to questions from many committee members. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Lee and Lydia. Really appreciate your work and your perspective. Also, just the sort of honesty around having changed your mind on what works and what doesn't work, and probably come to that conclusion through some hard lessons. And I think like what you're presenting is really provocative and sort of interesting, because I do think that domestic violence feels like one place where I, I think most folks would say, like, that is a place where police need to be involved, right? Like, we all now realize that addiction is a mental health issue and should not be treated with policing, but domestic violence still feels in that space. And so to hear you all say, "That's not actually right," I, I think is really interesting and provocative. And so my question is, and I hope this will be taken with a love and respect from my friends at the police department, but does it actually do more harm in cases of domestic violence? Not a murder, but everything that precipitates a murder to have police and court and criminal justice involvement?
I would say it depends. And so I, I want to be really clear too, that, that for some folks, what they want is punishment. Some survivors want punishment and they want retribution. And for those folks, that's the only game in town, right? Police, courts, that stuff, that's justice for them. I think there's a reason people want that, and I think the reason that many people want it is because it's the only thing we've ever offered, so that the only way that people understand justice in this space is through police, courts, and incarceration. But that's kind of another conversation. In many situations, the intervention of the criminal legal system does more harm than good. It does that when it removes a primary breadwinner or caregiver from a home for a short term or a long period of time. It, and that can be both the person who's actually done harm, and it can be the person who was harmed. I have, so I still represent clients in the system, and we've had numerous clients arrested for intimate partner violence, though they were not the primary perpetrators of that violence, because police don't always understand what's going on in a situation, because our clients don't always speak good English, because sometimes the person who's done harm is really persuasive or has defensive injuries. And there are lots of reasons why people come into the system. But so, to the extent that people lose their jobs, and they lose their income, and they lose custody of children, and the Child Protective Services system gets involved, and then when they go to court, sometimes, and the state's attorney and I have a, a long-running disagreement about this, victims are subpoenaed for their testimony, and if they decide not to testify, they are arrested and held. So we're locking up victims in order to secure their testimony in cases that then get dropped. You know, so if you look at the data, so many cases get dropped for various reasons. So th- there's also the kind of this assumption that once something goes into the criminal legal system, it follows a predictable path, arrest, prosecution, conviction, incarceration. And that's not true. So if somebody gets arrested but not prosecuted, what is the message that that then sends to everyone involved? If someone gets arrested and prosecuted and convicted but not held, what's the message there? And in all of that system, when we're not doing anything to address the underlying reasons why someone is using violence in the first place, it solves none of the problems, and in fact, only makes them worse. So, you know, we have had this kind of feminist narrative for many, many years that says intimate partner violence is about someone's desire to have power and control over their partner, and sometimes in the service of the patriarchy. I got to tell you, I don't believe that's true. I think that power and control is the outcome, but I don't think it's the intent. And when we say that that's the only intent, we ignore economics, and we ignore trauma and the impact of trauma, and the ways, there are so many other correlates with intimate partner violence that are not explained by one person wanting power and control over their intimate partner and using violence to get it. And if we don't do anything to address any of those other correlates, we're not going to change that behavior. Criminalization does not address the trauma that someone has experienced to help them learn to express themselves in different ways. Criminalization does not alleviate the economic stress that's leading to incarceration. So I, I'm sorry, the economic stress that's leading to the use of violence, sometimes I get going too fast. And so I would argue that in many cases, criminalization is doing more harm than good. There is another side to this argument, which is to say, oh, we don't actually know what criminalization does, we've never really tried it. You could lock up everybody who commits an act of intimate partner violence, and then we'll see if people are really safer. And I would argue that in a country where we already have the largest incarcerated population in the entire world by, you know, a factor of many times, that's not a viable solution either. So short-term incarceration is not changing people's behavior. Long-term incarceration is just going to take more and more people, and particularly black people, out of our communities. There's got to be a different way to do this work.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, Tina Kamara, who's our victim advocate and who works so very closely with, with victims every single day, would just like to, to add a little bit of what she's learned in, in doing that, in, in doing this work. Go ahead, Tina.
Yeah, go ahead, Tina.
Hi, thank you, Michelle. And thank you, Dr. Goodmark, for that, um, that, that much-needed-to-hear information. However, from my perspective, I'm going to have to push back just a little. It's been my experience being a DV advocate here with the Family Crimes Unit with the Baltimore City Police Department, and in addition to all the work that I've done in Washington DC on the policy level and the street level, that police intervention saves lives. In the mid, in the middle, in the midst of an domestic encounter, someone calls the police, the police show up, they could possibly, they are possibly saving those lives, and they stop that assault in its tracks. That arrest, at that moment in time, if the person, if the suspect hasn't got away, gives the victim an opportunity to come up with a safety plan, it gives the victim an opportunity, it gives us an opportunity to find them safe shelter, and it gives them an opportunity to actually save their life by having peace of mind and space to be able to make these necessary changes. Now, does incarceration for DV long-term, is that effective? I can't speak to that. I would say no, because, well, I can't speak to that technically, but in my heart, I would say no, because we have to go all the way back to the trauma that people have experienced as children and growing up through life. And these are some of the reasons why people do attack people, when they lose power, when they lose control, when they're angry and they're frustrated with their jobs, and they're frustrated with their lives, and they tend to take these, they, they tend to take that out on the people who are closest to them. So I see police intervention helping. I see these warrants that are being issued. I mean, the people that I work with every day are crying, they're scared. Like I said, we get these gun, the, the pointings, the guns, people are getting stabbed, cut, beat over the head. It's, it's terrible. We need the police, we need the police, we do. So I'm pro, you know, lock them up, not to keep them, but at least to give that person an opportunity to find safety.
So I think.
And there are men as well. I mean, I have men, I get men who are stabbed and, and, you know, we seek help for them as well. So it goes both ways.
Mr. Chairman, is it okay if I respond?
Sure, please.
So I, I think we don't agree, we don't, we don't disagree on the need for an intervention, right? Whether that intervention to stop that violence in the moment needs to be policed or can look different from that, I think is what we, we may disagree about. I don't, I think you could do that work, that intervention work, to stop the violence in the moment, give the person the ability to do safety planning, give the person the peace of mind in other ways. And that's, I think, the place where we might disagree. But I absolutely agree with you, there has to be a first responder who's equipped to deal with a violent situation. That's kind of the work that, that I'd love to see violence interrupters working with people who do intimate partner violence work doing. I think the only place where I disagree with you is, I don't think police stop violence. Police are an after-the-fact intervention, but I don't think they're doing the preventative work that we need to have done. And so I think we need to think differently about that. But I think we agree pretty much on just everything else.
And I agree with you, Ms. Goodmark, that we do agree, and you're right. Police are not proactive, they're reactive. However, let's be real here. Can we really, who can control what goes on in someone's home? When we're not there, let's be, just use our common sense. Can we, anybody really control what's going on in someone's home? I don't think that we can.
So if I could, if I could just quickly interject, because I think it's kind of threads the needle a little bit on the, between, or maybe connects the two a little bit, and mine is, again, much more anecdotal. I came to this work when I was a senior in high school. One of my very best friends, her father was arrested for having been sexually and physically abusing her and her younger sister since they were three and five years old. Abducted them from their mother. And so I came to this, this work, quite literally having watched this, it's still a very good friend of mine to this day, go through the criminal justice system, and by that time, she was over 18, so she wasn't, she wasn't placed in foster care, but her younger sister was. And it was her younger sister who was the primary victim in a criminal situation. I raise that to say, you know, there was a lot. Family, at that moment that the police arrived and that they took the younger daughter out of that, that crisis situation, and she was placed in foster care. Of course, we can all talk about, you know, it was, that she got a foster family that was a really good fit for her. But that's not always the case, but it was definitely the case that she was in immediate danger. So I think going to Ms., is it Kamara? Is that how I pronounced it?
Kamara.
Kamara. To, to your point of, in those moments of crisis, who, who can intervene? Now, I will say, in that instance, they did not arrest her father right away. Investigation, and that, I'm sure, is what happens in many circumstances where, you know, either, as, as Ms. Kamara mentioned, the person who's caused the harm has fled the scene, right? And so then there's the whole warrant process. So there's many different factual scenarios. What, you know, what I learned as a 17-year-old senior in school was, what we see on TV is not what happens, right? It isn't a law and order-type moment, where somebody's been harmed, the police officers are out the very next minute, you know, they're canvassing the neighborhood, they get an arrest warrant, and it's all wrapped up nicely within an hour, right? It's a much longer process. And I think for many, many folks, survivors as well as, you know, just people on the street, that would be surprising, surprising to know that there are often these moments, that a survivor doesn't know where that person is that's caused them harm, that's, you know, aimed a gun at them, they don't know where they are and they don't feel safe. And so those are all, you know, that, those are the realities. And I'm not saying that that precludes a role for the police, but it definitely, you know, I'm very, very thankful for all of the work that you do, Ms. Kamara, because I know when people haven't called the police, they don't have a Ms. Kamara to, like, help them through that process and say, "This is where we can get you, we can get you to shelter." They're trying to navigate all those systems on their own. So I think it is about expecting too much of the police and what the police can do in those moments. And I very much agree with some folks, for some survivors, they're like, "I'd be happy when he's dead under the jail," right? Like, "I don't ever want to see him again, and I hope he rots in hell," right? And me, as their lawyer, I'm like, "All right, that's what we're fighting for, that's what we're doing this time." So to your point, Councilmember Cohen, around my change of heart, or my change of perspective, I guess, is more accurate, from one that was fueled by my friend's experience where I really wanted, wanted her father to go to jail for a really long time for having disrupted her, you know, natural progression in her life, and for her sister, to one in which what I saw over and over again was, in that moment that a survivor calls the police, what they want is safety. They're not thinking, "Do, do I want him to lose his job? Do I want him to be out of the house? I kind of need his help getting the kids, you know, to school every day. Do I want him to not be paying his part of our rent?" No, what I want is I want this violence to stop. It's not the police's role. But as Ms. Kamara mentioned, you know, the incarceration piece, and, you know, in that moment where you're like, "I just, you know, I'm scared, a gun's being pointed at me, someone has to come in and stop this." Of course, the police is all we have offered up. So to Lee's point of, what else could we provide? Because what happens when you call the police is no longer in your hands as a survivor, right? You don't get to say, "Wait, I'm good, you know, he's left me alone now, like, can we just cease this? Like, go somewhere else, because I want him to be able to go to work tomorrow, and, you know, give me some child support and pick up the kids from school on Friday so I can get to work." They don't have that, there's no longer autonomy in that, in how that plays out. So that's really where my change of heart was really about then being the advocate for people, for survivors, you know, saying to the state's attorney's office, or in DC, the US Attorney's Office, saying, "Please just don't, you know, will you just drop these charges and not arrest her? Not, you know, hold her on this subpoena? Will you please let this, you know, all go away, because he's going to be deported if he gets a conviction, and that's going to be devastating for the children? Can you please just..." They had, they had their role to play, right? And it's no longer in the survivor's hands.
Thank you, Lydia. I want to, I want to make sure we get to questions, but I, I think both Lydia, Lee, and Tina, we're, I think we're wrestling with a pretty complicated idea here. And I think in the course of this conversation, it, it's pretty apparent to me that some people are not relying on police today. And out of those 11 that, that Lydia referred to earlier, six did not in the past and ended up getting shot. So I, I think there seems to be a gap there. I, I think without question, there's certainly a need for the police department in some instances. And there is, and I think we, we discussed this a little bit in the initial hearing, there are things that are early indicators where we can perhaps intervene and provide support for the victim, or provide counseling for the perpetrator or otherwise, that we completely miss today. And that could possibly help save lives in the future. So I think, to kind of thread the needle, I think that there, there is some in-between space there, which I think we're right now sorting out. I don't think we've had this conversation, certainly not publicly before. So I, I really, really appreciate you, Tina, for actually making that point. Yes, we do need police there. And, and from the other side, I think there are instances where maybe folks are not relying on the police because they fear what that could mean for them, because they are undocumented, or they use drugs, or they have children, or they have jobs in our, on, on the borders. So I, I think, you know, these are just realities we're dealing with. And I, I think it's good that you, you push back on that, because I think it's, it's something, it's, it's what makes policy what it is, it's never that, that straightforward. I want to make sure I open up, because I'm sure other committee members have questions. Are there any additional questions, Councilman Cohen, before we move on to any other members?
I do have one more, but it's cool to move on to someone else, because that took a while. And just would concur that I think it's important to have this conversation and try to, like, work our way through it. I, I do think we are being pushed, not just as a city, but as a country right now, to sort of identify alternatives to incarceration around a host of issues, and adopt systems like trauma-informed care or restorative practices. And that's really hard to do, especially on a topic like this one, where I think generally we do feel a lot of empathy for the victim, and we're also attuned to thinking of justice as punishment. And I think it's a hard needle to try and thread. But I think, really appreciate all the perspectives that folks are offering. And like I said, I got more, but we'll defer to someone else.
Sure, any other questions from folks on the committee?
Mr. Chair, I had a question, this is Councilwoman Porter.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Just wanted to, to, to agree with Tina. One of the, the main issues that I have, when we're looking at the data, is not, is, is the after-effect. So once that victor, excuse me, once that victim, you know, presses charges, and then there's retaliatory measures to that victim, that's one, one of the things that I don't think the data is capturing from, and, and I could be wrong from any of the organizations. We've seen a host of Black and Brown women over the course of the last five years alone, some in Baltimore City, but more across the nation, whereby they, you know, have retaliatory measures against them, and then they end up being killed. They had the proper legal, legal ramifications in place, restraining orders, peace orders, and things of that nature, and there was still lack of protection. Adding on to the complex issue that, that Chair Conway just said, how can we ensure that victims are continuously being protected from their perpetrators? Because it seems there, there are large. it seems there, there are large gaps within our legal system that is really putting victims in the line of fire whereby there's, one, there's no hope. Some of these victims are taking their, you know, their, their, their justice into their own hands. You know, they're, they're working through the proper channels, but the channels are not working, and they haven't been working for some time. And so I just wanted to ask, what type, what other types of resources or avenues can victims, victims work through, not just, you know, going to, you know, the House of Routh, which is a great, great resource, but we all know that there are other resources that are needed, much more enforcing resources that are needed for, to protect these victims?
I don't know if I, if I have a great concern for you, Councilwoman. I, you know, thinking, again, having been doing this work for 30 years, prior to the Violence Against Women Act and our reliance on systems as a solution, you know, there was quite literally an underground for survivors to tap into, right? I'm not safe in Cleveland, I gotta change my name, I gotta change my identity. It's become very, very difficult with, you know, computers that we carry around with us, with, you know, everything being associated with our bank cards, with our, you know, our full, whole money thing, you know, you can't drive cross-country without someone being able to track you if you have any of these things, any of these devices. So it's very different now than it was in the 70s and 80s to disappear. I have had a number of clients who have this. I'm sorry, Mike, can you hear me? Is that better? Yes, okay. I've had clients for whom disappearing was the only option. That was the only way they were going to betray of the person that was causing the harm. In all those instances, they were married and had children. And this is where, again, Lee and I both worked as civil attorneys, as family lawyers. And I did a lot of work representing survivors in custody cases. And to be honest with you, it's almost worse to have a custody order because if you, if you as the survivor are like, nope, I hear the tone in his voice, it is not safe for me to be interacting with him, he doesn't get hesitation this week, I can tell he's high, I can tell he's angry, but if she doesn't make the child children available, she'll be helping him. There were many times that I wished I had never helped my client to get a custody order. Those instances were the very violent value case, because it was now binding her to report order in the same way that it's binding them. Now, again, you know, all sorts of, there was a time at which I would have said, all of those protections that were built into the family law and into, you know, the interstate laws around enforcing custody and how child support is calculated, I was 100% an advocate of those things, those measures that were meant to be protective. And they're in the hands of judges who are humans and very flawed in their execution. So I had some judges that I'd be like, oh, thank goodness, I have judged so-and-so, I'm going to get an order where this survivor's going to be safe, and where the children are going to be safe, and the father's still going to have a relationship with the children if he so chooses. And there were others where I got, oh, I judge so-and-so, we might want to dismiss this. So it's not a good answer for you, because it's still, it's leaving individuals in this
Sure.
perfect system.
Sure.
And, and I, you know, the alternatives, and, you know, at the risk of sounding like I want to turn back time, there's a part of me that feels, you know, like we have to counsel folks to get off social media, get rid of these devices. And that's what really, really hard sell for many people, right? I mean, it's just family, friends, other support networks that you have. So I don't have a perfect answer, but what I do know is, on a case-by-case basis, those are the kinds of discussions that I have with survivors.
And I appreciate, okay.
You have, you put your finger on exactly the problem that we have.
Yeah.
Which is, there is no legal solution that keeps somebody 100% safe. Protective order, unless, unless we want to lock people up forever, there is no, there is no legal solution that keeps people safe. What, what keeps people safe, I think, is changing the behavior. And that's the place where we're failing, is that if, if we're serious about keeping someone safe in the long term, we both have to prevent these things from happening in the first place, and we have to help people change their behavior. Because restraining orders are not going to stop somebody who really wants to kill somebody, and we all know that. And short terms of incarceration aren't going to do that either. And so that's the real problem, I think.
So, so I understand what you're, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, you as well as I know, behavioral psychology change is very, very difficult, and it takes very much time. And I was more garnering, you know, I understand, totally understand behavior trees, but I was, I was more broaching the fact that the, what other enforcement opportunities, legal and through the police department, can we ensure in the short term that these individuals are safe? I mean, you know, and maybe, you know, Director Weisberg, or maybe you can provide some emphasis on that, but what other ways can we protect victims? It's, it just seems like too many victims are falling through the cracks, and they're going through the correct process of the legal system.
And so, Councilwoman, I think that's a really good question. And I, and part of the reason why we have Tina on this call with us, you know, she is working
So sorry, Tina, so sorry.
No, 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 it's fine. She, her job is to be with these victims, you know, help them figure out strategies to get themselves safe. And I, and I've heard her say a couple of times that, you know, she helps them come up with safety plans, you know, what, and, 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 and things like that. And Tina, I'm going to ask you to jump in there, but, you know, in a, in a moment, because she, she is able to talk with these folks in a way where the message is received. She, she's not a sworn member of the department. She is a civilian. And so they are hearing her differently and helping to collaborate. They collaborate, she and them, to, to make these sorts of plans. You know, she also helps make sure that they can get the ex parte orders and takes them to court and those types of things. But absent that, Tina, is there anything else that you, that you do that, that, that would contribute to this overall safety of the victim?
Thank you. Councilwoman Porter, I'm gonna, if I, if I may, walk you through a day in the life of me working with the victim. If, if there's time, I'll make it really quick. So I received this case November the 20th. It's one of our first responders. I'm gonna not say their names for obvious reasons, but on Saturday, November the 20th, at approximately 10:06 hours, officers responded to said location for an aggravated assault. Upon the arrival, they met with the victim, who stated she had a verbal altercation, and she was assaulted by her boyfriend, who's the suspect. The victim stated that during the altercation, over text message on his phone, the suspect got, became angry and aggressive and grabbed her by her left arm and threw her to the floor. The victim stated that when she got up from the floor, she started to struggle back with the suspect. She stated by the time the suspect got back to her, he pulled out a black handgun. She wasn't sure where he pulled the gun out from and pointed it to her head, threatening to kill her. She stated he was on the other side of the fence and approached him once again and threatened to kill her. And he called her a curse word, now I will effing kill you, while putting the black gun to her forehead. The victim stated she told him to get out of the house and call the police. He left the location, he fled a certain direction. Police identified him. She had no injuries. Of course, he wasn't on the scene, so they responded to the court commissioner's office and obtained a warrant. I received this case, my job, my first order of business is to ensure their safety. So my first question is, are you safe where you are? Well, yes, I am. Then that's fine. If, if, if they're not, if they don't feel safe where they are, then I begin to look for shelter for them. My two main resources of House of Ruth and Turnaround, who are extremely helpful. However, there are times where shelter is full. Then what? You have to go out to the county, the PG or Howard, and see if you can find shelter there. Many times, they'll stay with a family member or friend if they can. My next order of business is, are you going to get a protective order? If so, let me show you how to do it. Let me help you. Before COVID, I would actually go to court with the victims and sit with them while they went through this process, because having to tell the story over again re-traumatizes them. So it's good to have someone sit there with them while they go through this process. But since COVID, we don't do that any longer. So the protective orders are important, because if a victim is in Section 8 housing or public housing, this will help expedite a relocation. And also, if the victim has children, through that protective order, they will get temporary custody of their child through the final, through the temporary protective order and the final protective order for a year. And that will give them time to go through the whole process to get legal custody. My third order of business is to ensure their mental health. Do you need counseling? If so, let me refer you to various counseling agencies. Did the children witness the incident? If children were present, if they did, then I look for counseling for them as well. With this particular incident, she declined all of that. She was really interested in relocation. So I advocated on her behalf of that. I sent, we have a contact over at HABC. So I sent her an email. They were able to expedite the situation because she had the protective order, and she did have the police report. The police reports are extremely important. So therefore, they, they were able to work with her and expedite her a new voucher. So I spoke with her a couple of days ago. She was in the process of finding new housing. I don't know, I don't remember, I haven't been on case search regarding this case, if the person is in custody. I believe he was at the time, which gave her the time and space to be able to work the system and relocate herself. So once he got out, she, he would not know where she is. That's a day in my life. You know, I can't account for the people who don't want the help. I, I can't account, I can't make anybody rehab or get the counseling that they need. But my, my order of business is to ensure that safety in that moment in time. I think that, I think, my humble opinion, intimate partner violence is this huge onion, and it has all these layers. And it's just going to take all of us as a collective to work through this. So I thank you for this opportunity. I don't get to speak very often. This is, this is what I do, and this is, this is what's real. This is what's real.
And we appreciate you. And I think that, you know, a lot of folks don't understand the role that you play on the department's behalf. And it's really important that folks kind of see this and hear this and, and understand kind of this, this support that, that we're offering through you. So thank you so much for explaining that.
Thank you.
No, I, I appreciate, yeah, I'm so sorry, Ms. Kamara, I'm so sorry, I didn't know you were on the call. Yeah, so definitely want to provide deference to you. But I'm, you know, Mr. Chair, if I can have a, just about two minutes of indulgence, just to kind of really kind of talk through the checkpoints whereby people, women particularly, are going through, like, they're following the process. They're following the process, they're getting the protective orders, they're doing all the things that Ms. Kamara is really talking about. But there are still gaps in the, the system whereby the system is failing them. And I feel like, you know, we've been talking about this on par for more than, in, in my, in my public health experience, for more than about 10 years, you know, where we've been talking about intimate partner violence and how the system is failing. But I haven't seen any real inter-agency connection or inter-collaboration with systems to make it better. And it just seems like the problem is getting worse. And as we know, with COVID-19, domestic violence, intimate partner violence, child abuse, those types of, you know, closed-door, closed-door health outcomes are underreported. And there, the, the lack of, the lack of response in, in any case from the victim or anybody around the victim is not as robust as it could be. So I'm wondering, like, you know, I'm adding to the complex issue that Chair Conway was talking about, just really elevating not only just what's happening in the data, but the indirect outcomes that, that, and the narrative that's surrounding this data as well. Like, the stuff that we already know that's occurring, that's not being represented in the data.
So if I may, Chair Conway, I, Nick's not on the phone anymore, so I'll say on behalf of Monze, as I know, the Domestic Violence Coordinating Council will be reconvening as well at Domestic Violence Fatality Board, which is some, I think, would address some of what you're asking about, Councilwoman Porter, of how do we, how do we get better inter-agency collaboration? So I, I know Nick's not on the phone right now, and those things are being built back up, but I would hope that those would be discussions. And what I would add to that, and this comes from my experience in DC, where, you know, it's a weird jurisdiction, that it's the beds that are prosecuting local crimes, where to be, you know, and again, I'm coming at this as a devotee of incarceration, but again, for those circumstances where keeping him locked up is the only way. I had a case very early in my career where the, my client was married, had three children, long history of abuse, she got a protection order against him. And he, after he got, he was arrested, that night that she called the police, she went and got a protection order. When he got out, he broke down the door. She heard that happen, barricaded herself in her bedroom and in the closet, so locked the bedroom door, and then barricaded herself in the closet. He broke, he broke those doors with the three children in the hall, all witnessing this, dragged her out of the house, held the gun to her head in the house. She didn't die, he pulled the trigger, it was because the gun misfired. What he went to jail for was a federal charge of possession of a firearm while under an order of protection. So, you know, sometimes the, so I say this to say, US Attorney's Office, where, I'm sorry, yeah, the Maryland US Attorney's Office may also be a good partner, because there are different tools under the federal system than there are in the state system. So that's, I mean, that's just one example of how, where we wouldn't have, you know, that the state charges weren't going to give him the same amount of time, while that, like guilty, he got 10 years, which was a phenomenal, that's exactly what my client wanted. She wanted her kids to grow up knowing that they were safe and their father is safe.
Sure. Thanks. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the indulgence of the conversation.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Porter. I think excellent questions. And as we've all alluded to, this is complicated, as you start to peel back the onion. And so we're gonna, we're gonna wrap up here. We're not going to vote this out again today. I think we want to have an opportunity to follow up and think about what we've seen through the pandemic and understand the changes in our system going forward. I really want to thank Ms. Watts and Professor Goodmark for your insights and your expertise on this issue. And I really want to thank you, Ms. Kamara, for you, for the work you're doing, but even more the insights and your firsthand experience. It goes a long way towards helping us peel back the onion and understand the core. You know, this, this is tough stuff. And I think, you know, having these conversations and sometimes confusing conversations, I think can be helpful for us to hopefully find gold nuggets in the middle of it all. So with that, we're going to go into recess, and we'll revisit this at a later date. Thank you all, and have a great, 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 great day.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.